Okay, so this is the Village of Reinbeck Planning Board Meeting of January 4th, 2022. Calling to order, do we need, do we need a vote to call to order, Ryan?
Um, we just need a, a motion and a vote of who is going to serve as acting chair tonight in David's absence.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead Suzanne.
Yeah, to for Jeff Christensen to serve as the acting chair in David Miller's absence.
John.
Roll call vote.
John Clark.
Hi.
Suzanne Holsberg.
Hi.
Michael Gee.
Hi.
And Jeff Christensen, aye, passes.
Okay.
First order of business, let's take a look at our agenda. The Unlimited Tomorrow, 6579 Spring Brook Avenue, Ryan, have they asked to defer again?
I have, they did not ask Jeff, I did reach out to the engineer, Taconic Engineering. And this was right around New Year's Eve. And I did not receive an answer. They did have the agenda, they did have the Zoom link, but it seems like they were unable to attend.
Okay, so.
So I think we'll.
Right then, just, just to confirm, no one representing United Tomorrow is here at this meeting?
Uh, by the list of participants, I don't see anyone who, who represents them.
Okay, then we'll defer consideration of this until the following meeting?
Yes, until January 18th.
Next item is Shadine and Mark Isarles, Warren Smith is joining us, this is about 46 Livingston Street. Welcome, Warren.
Okay, so we went for the zoning board last month, requested area variances, both rear yard and side yard owing to the building's existing location on, on Mulberry Street there. And as well as a area variance for the size of the apartment based simply on the second floor area of the building. And after due consideration, the zoning board granted those requested variances. That I suspect that Ryan has provided you with the, the resolution and the comments from the zoning board. They had a couple of concerns, which I think the planning board had actually also raised at their last meeting, meeting. One was that a designated parking space be assigned for the, the accessory apartment. And the second concern really is, is a kind of a general one, which is that there should be a statement that it's not intended for a short-term rental, like a, you know, Airbnb without a specific application, subsequent application to the village for that purpose. That's not the owner's intent, and it's understood that should it be their intent or anyone else's intent in the future, they would need to come before the planning board to, to apply for that in accordance with the village regulations. But that's, that's not the plan. So that was just a sort of an observation of the zoning board. Before they, they granted the, the requested variances and sent it back to the planning board. And my understanding is, of course, we're going to need a public hearing, which is something that I would request that this board consider setting up for a subsequent meeting tonight. I shared with Ryan earlier today, and I don't know if he had a chance to get it and, and share with all of you. An opinion from the engineer, David Ryder, who met with the owners, looked at the property and determined that a septic system to serve the house as well as the accessory apartment could be installed on the property, and he actually did a preliminary layout for that system. And is in the process of submitting that to the Health Department for their review and approval. But of course, approval of that system would be required before we could get a building permit to turn the second floor of the carriage house into an apartment anyway. Per the, per the building code, but, but that is in process and for your information, I did pass it along to Ryan. If you haven't seen it, you'll see it before the next meeting anyway.
Yes, Ryan sent that out via email just today. Just one, just to take a step back, one more, just can you reiterate the result of the zoning board of adjustment review?
There's only where it feels granted, the variances, the, the side yard variance and rear yard being to Mulberry and to the neighbor there, the adjacent neighbor in Mulberry. And they granted the variance requesting that the apartment be larger than the stated maximum in the zoning code to recognize the fact that the second floor of the carriage is larger than the maximum allowable apartment size.
So then to keep the ball rolling on, on this, would it be to, to, to John and Suzanne and Ryan, would it be appropriate to schedule the public hearing? Without delay, and of course, this would be any, any, any advanced action would be subject to the approval of the Duchess County Board of Health for the septic system that would have to be installed. But I don't think that should hold us up from planning a public hearing, do you agree? John, Suzanne?
I.
You're muted, John.
I, I wanted to say that the part in the, in the ZBA's document that we got where it says that the applicant has to, or that they requested notarized letter that they don't intend to use the ADU as a short-term rental. I really feel uncomfortable with that because it's totally unnecessary. I mean, they have the right if they wanted to, and what their intention is today is not binding on them for the future. So it's really a meaningless statement, and I think it's inappropriate to ask for somebody to give a notarized letter of their intent, which it's really nobody's business and what they intend to do with it. Because they do have the right to either use it as an apartment, or they do have the right to have a short-term rental if they follow the procedures that are set out in the code. So I just don't understand why that's in there.
So I can shed some light on that being that I was present for the ZBA hearing. That was from one singular member only, and because it's not part of the vote, because it's not part of the findings. It is merely a request from the ZBA to the planning board to consider that it is not binding to the applicant, that it is something that the ZBA wanted the planning board to consider. And that it's be something that the planning board has the ability to have oversight over. You know, the use of, because nobody can predict the future. It's just, it's just something that, you know, this member wanted to make sure was part of the record. And that it was stated as a request to the planning board concerning the village and its policy on short-term rentals.
I believe, and I'm not positive about this, and I can't cite the exact case. But I think we've requested that as a condition of site plan approval before for accessory apartments. That they not be turned into short-term rentals. Because the purpose of accessory apartments in the code is to provide more affordable type housing units. It's not to provide. Well, that's what the purpose is, is to provide more affordable, and to turn it into a short-term rental is, doesn't fulfill that purpose. So I think we've done that in the past, and I'm not sure, I can't cite the, the exact one, because we don't get that many accessory apartments, but I'm fairly certain that we've done that in the past.
We've done it a number of times.
Yeah, it's different than asking for some sort of notarized letter of intent. It was as a condition of approval, is not to be turned into a return rental, so that if they decide, or some future owner decides that they want to turn it into a short-term rental, it's in violation of the site plan, and they would have to come back to us. So I, I don't have any problem with that. I agree that the notarized letter of intent does, is meaningless. Now, I would suggest that we require it as a condition of the site plan approval for it, but that could be discussed at the public hearing as well.
Correct.
The only thing that I, that I'm seeing on the plans with the septic system, which is, we just got it 10 minutes ago. I don't know if it was this applicant or the previous owner, but we had delineated parking behind the carriage house. And now the zoning board of appeals has said we have to delineate how, you know, the house parking and the accessory apartment parking. And somebody at some point ignored the parking behind it and put it on the side, and that's not indicated. I don't have a question one way or the other, I'm just saying, I think we're going to need to, at some point, make sure that the parking is delineated and you know, is on approved plans, because right now it's not on this one, and the existing parking that's there is not what we had approved for somebody a few years back.
You referring to the drawing on the septic letter?
Yeah, I've just seen it now. And we had approved somebody, and I don't know if it's this applicant or a previous owner for doing something, and we said we wanted parking behind the carriage house, and that was, that was our approval. And then when they did whatever we approved, which I don't remember what it was, the parking moved to the north side of the carriage house in a different spot, and that wasn't, you know, where we, and I don't care one way or the other, you know, I just.
Would you like to, would you like to share that page with us, Michael? So we're all looking.
I don't know how to do that.
Okay, I can do that. Do I have permission? Can I share, Ryan?
Yes, Jeff, yep.
Okay, hold on.
That parking behind the carriage house was for the bread and breakfast, which I'm not sure ever happened. There was also a pool approved on this property at one point. Within that fenced-in area, so I don't, I assume that that's in there either.
That's both expired, both of them have, have expired.
So I don't have any problem with the parking is delineated. Does Warren have an idea where the applicant would want the designated accessory apartment parking?
Yeah, we actually discussed this at the, the last meeting. If the parking area there on the north side of the carriage house isn't sufficient, we could certainly park a vehicle in the garage. And that could be designated for one of the owner's vehicles, or alternatively for a tenant of the apartment's vehicles, but either one would be acceptable.
Yeah, I, I would say just pick one and, and put that on the site plan, so it's clear where the designated accessory apartment parking is, even if they park in multiple locations.
Right. And it looks like this proposed plan from, from the engineer shows the proposed leach fields and the large, it looks like the larger tank. So if, if you could do that, Warren, if, if you could provide an updated site plan showing where the additional parking was that would not violate any of the rules to, to get the septic approved, that would be, that would be a good thing.
Sure.
And to John, John, to your point, we could still schedule and go ahead with the public hearing, so as not to put it off another month. As long as we get to the topic and resolve one way or another, the issue of whether or not short-term rentals would be allowed here. Is that correct?
Yeah, I, you know, I think that's under consideration, and we can hear from the public, and if that's an issue or not an issue, and make a decision at, at an approval time. And I think normally, I think it's great to have a engineer involved and to have a site plan sketch that includes potential leach fields. Show that it's possible, but we've often also approved things with the condition against Department of Health approval at a later date. So we wouldn't have to delay a decision until then.
Okay, then can we have a motion to schedule a public hearing on this project? Pending, assuming that we will get an updated site plan to show, to show what we've just agreed to be considered by the public during the public hearing. And that we will also bring out and let the public share opinions on whether short-term rental should be limited.
And you'd be ready for that for in two weeks, or do you need a month, Warren?
No, two weeks is fine. Sure, if that gives you enough time to notice a public hearing, sure.
Ryan, can we notice in time?
Uh, yes, it was, yes. Yes, it's close, but as long as it's date stamped 10 days prior, I think we can, I think we, it's, it's going to be close, but I think we can manage.
Okay, so that would be Tuesday, January 18th.
Correct.
All right, do we have a motion for that?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay. Michael Gee.
Aye.
Susan Holberg, Suzanne Holberg, John Clark.
Aye.
Jeff Christensen, aye, motion passes, we will schedule, if the information is there in time, it can be scheduled for Tuesday, January 18th. Thank you. Next item. 6384 Mill Street, this is another one of yours, Warren.
Yeah, I'm listed as the agent, although Victoria Polidoro is also on the call. The board may recall that some months ago, you came before you to request the conversion of the second floor of 6384 Mill Street, the old telephone company building, as old timers know it as, into a, a single unit apartment. And that was approved by the board. The, the owners had not carried out that work, and in the meantime, have a prospective tenant, I believe, in an IT company that's willing to take the second floor for continued use as a, as a single business location. And so essentially, this application is to undo or nullify the approval of, of the second floor as an apartment. The, the tenant, the tenant apparently signed the lease, so I don't have a signage proposal or, or anything else to do with this, a specific new tenant. But the owner simply wanted to have permission to not use it as an apartment, and apparently the way to do that is to come back to you and amend the site plan approval again to basically undo that, that prior approval to an apartment. And Victoria, if there's anything else you want to weigh in with, please feel free.
Hi, everyone. No, I believe you've covered it very well, Warren. We're just looking to nullify the approval that was granted in August.
And if I can share this screen. This is the proposal for the commercial.
The apartment, actually. I believe, oh, no, maybe not, I'm sorry, I take it back, that, this is what is, is there or was there for the previous commercial use, exactly right.
Was there, so this is my question, is this, is this what is in the building now? Or is this a proposal to construct these partitions and make, make this set of offices?
No, those partitions were constructed a few years ago to the design of Larry Garrick for the previous office tenant, that's actually when Maya Kamal had it as a office and cooking studio. And to my knowledge, those partitions are still in place, I don't believe they were demolished.
I'm unaware of any changes to the floor plan.
Okay. Well, that, that, that being the case, the, the other sets of documentation. We have a cover letter from Roden House Chail and Polidaro, and this is, this is, Victoria, this is the letter specifying the request.
Yes, this was the letter that accompanied, we also submitted an application, a site plan application to request the conversion back to office space. And I provided a letter just explaining the request and showing how it meets the standards of the district to keep it commercial.
Okay, and here's the short form. This is the site plan application.
Yes.
Professional. Consent form. Signed by Mr. Bender. This is the floor plan. Okay, this, this actually was the, I, I had brought up the previous plan to make it into an apartment, but this no longer applies, this is the.
That, right, that was the plan to make it into an apartment.
And it was not carried out.
Okay. The other thing I did mention, when we saw this site plan before, can you see this picture on the side?
Not yet.
No.
Okay, I'll have to stop and restart the share. How about that?
Yes.
Okay, when we went over the plan to convert to an apartment, I noted, Warren, that there is actually a second window to the right there.
Yes.
And that's not shown, let me stop and start again. Doesn't appear to be shown on the site plan, I don't know that it makes a whole lot of a difference, it looks to me like that. We were, we were wondering whether that window, when we went over this the last time, was in the middle of where a wall was, but if this, if this is the existing set of partitions, then it, it can't be. I guess that window is probably in the hallway leading to the stairs.
Uh, well, it may be in that second space between the hallway leading to the stairs and the front office, but it, it should be on the plan, certainly.
Yeah, okay, so. Yeah, okay, so in other words, this, this smaller office here with no windows.
We, we can locate that window and have it added to the plan.
Okay. All right, some, some advice from John, Michael, Suzanne, Ryan, are there other items we need to go over to answer this request to return it back to commercial use?
Do we know what sort of office business it is?
The, the potential tenant is a financial services office.
All right, so low impact.
Yeah, low impact.
And the designated parking is taken care of.
Right, parking is already provided for in the Mill Street lot, at the time that the, the hub hotel was approved. We had counted those spaces for an office, and so this, you know, is no change there.
So I, no exterior changes, I don't see any reason why this shouldn't be undone.
I, I will just note that I will be back before you at some point, because the new tenant is likely going to want a sign. And when I came before you a few months ago to get a recommendation for a blanket sign variance for the building, we did not include that space because it was residential. So I'm not sure what they have in mind, but at some point, we'll be back before you to discuss signage.
Okay.
Okay, any other opinions on this, Michael Gee?
No, I think it's, it's quick and easy and fine, and you know, low impact, and there's plenty of parking over in the, the Mill Street thing, and it would previously approved, I think, when it was Cocoon Theater or Maya Kamal, if I think eight spaces was the number I heard, so you know, this is pretty clear cut to me.
Okay, Suzanne Holsberg.
Have no problem with approving this.
Nor do I, so can we have a motion then?
There's no public hearing required, right?
No.
This is our permitted use.
Correct.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the change from residential to office, commercial, professional office.
I'll second that.
Okay, John Clark.
Aye.
Suzanne Holsberg.
Aye.
Michael Gee.
Aye.
And Jeff Christensen is aye, motion passes.
Thank you, I just want to also note for the record that it's a type-two secret action. Because it's reuse of an existing commercial structure where it's permitted by law, so that's just for the minutes.
Noted.
Thank you, Ryan.
Okay, um, according to my agenda, that's that's it, except do we have, what, what's the status of the minutes, Ryan?
So Jeff, we are in a transition space right, right now. Chrissy, Amy, thankfully, and I'd like to for the record and, and for Zoom and everyone out there, thank Chrissy, Amy, for her hours and her time drafting the minutes, I believe, for the past year or so. I know for the ones that were drafted for you guys, other than some minor edits and corrections and things like that. She, she completed each task 100%. So for the time that she was assisting the planning board and in her position, I would just like to thank her. So right now, there is a replacement for Chrissy. It's in the pay, paperwork phase right now, and also we need to get the laptop back from Chrissy, Amy, and then get the laptop to this new person. And get her on track with where Chrissy, Amy left off. And sort of point her in that direction and, and get her going, she's very eager to start. And I think she'll do a fantastic job, and, and hopefully you all will, will agree once you know, we see the end, the end result of, you know, drafts of the minutes.
And did you mention the name, or did I miss that?
I did not, her name is Miranda Wyant.
Uh huh.
And she is ready to put, you know, a foot forward in the right, right direction to start as soon, as soon as she can.
Um, that sounds great, and so as far as any of the prior drafts are concerned, there was one that came out, Michael Gee pointed out some issues with it, so we don't actually have any drafts at this moment to.
Right, no, we need to resolve that issue between July and August. And you know, the, probably the most difficult part of that will be the July meeting. Because that was sort of the scramble meeting where we had, we did not have Zoom. And we did not have your tech, your video camera at all, and we were solely relying on the recorder, so.
We have, we have only, we have only the audio recording.
We only have audio, we have no video of that meeting at all, and then we were able to with your assistance, Jeff, and your ca- camera able to put video and audio into place for the August meeting, so.
Okay, and, and as you're recording this ever since then on Zoom, so. Okay, so we look forward, we look forward to our new scribe and our person that's going to help us out. And on behalf of the planning board, I as well want to thank Chrissy, Amy for all her service. Very grateful for everything she's done for us. Anyone else have any comments or any other business?
I, I'll just talking to David at our pre-meeting last week, Loopy Mango, I think it's been cited for putting sandwich board signs up, and they want to get more signage because they're in that awkward place setback, and I believe David said they may still have eight square feet, and I just kind of said, well, maybe they could come up with another sign that would go on the west wall. Like the Art 71 around the corner, kind of tandem that, but we don't have anything, I just know that's, you know, we'll be seeing that in the future. Just to mention it.
Yeah, so that, hopefully that'll come up. Do you know, Ryan, if, if, if the, if the use of the sandwich boards has settled down on the sidewalk? Yeah, so that hopefully that'll come up. Um do you know, Ryan, if 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 the uh if the use of the sandwich boards has settled down on the sidewalk?
As far as I know, fingers crossed here, and if you can find some kind of wood uh based, you know, give it a good knock. Um I I believe for the majority, um uh Justin and I have put um axe to the grindstone and have uh notified as many businesses as possible. Um there may be a stray one or two of them over the weekend when they know no one is watching, uh may utilize it, so um I don't, I don't know. I don't uh visit the village frequently on the weekends. But other than that, I know um Justin and I uh before the holiday, during the holiday break, we um sent out uh notification letters to businesses, known businesses um utilizing sandwich board signs.
Well, thank you for that. Any any other uh issues or items that anyone wants to bring up? Okay, um in that case, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Second the motion.
Okay, motion to adjourn. Um John Clark?
Aye.
Michael Gee?
Aye.
Suzanne Holsberg?
Aye.
And Jeff Christensen, aye. All right, that's it, folks. Have a good.
It feels better by next meeting.
Yeah, have a have a good couple of weeks. I I spoke with David earlier. He sounded absolutely terrible. He could barely speak.